As we find ways to protect the things that protect us. These are the folks answering the call in the middle of the night and leave their family to come save yours. Help us as leaders to understand what we need to do to protect the citizens of this county. Amen. Saying of a pledge, will you?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Bowen, I had asked for this work session between the supervisors and Nodaway County Emergency Squad. I'd like to just get a quick introduction, just for the record, and then I'd like you to facilitate the meeting for me.
Yes, sir, I'll be glad.
Could you start, Ryan?
Go do an introduction first.
How long have you been involved with this squad?
Twenty twenty years.
Riches folks, fifteen years.
Paul Robinson, twenty-five years.
Stephen Fisher, sixty-three years.
You heard right.
Cheryl Williams, combined ten years.
David Williams, thirty-two years.
The floor is going to be the squads first. You want us to share what kind of thoughts you've had since the budget meeting where we learned that we're going to have to help? So I'm going to, let's see.
Well, Mr. Chairman, let me, let me start off. So about, and David, I'm not going to give exact dates. Buddy knows probably more, more so than I could look up what came out. In October of this, in 2024, maybe November was getting close. David called me and the deal was, well, after we collected taxes, we were going to start giving out payments to the squad and the three fire departments. And David got in touch with Buddy and Buddy come to see me and he said, look, we need our money a little early. And, and that was a red flag for me, but he said, we're working it out, da, da, da. And I said, well, let me, let me call the chiefs. I know on this moment Deion couldn't make it, but I think he had Blackstone was there and Joey and of course Brian. And, and all I asked, I said, well, yeah, let them have us check early. It's fine. We all in this thing together. Just don't have Alzheimer's, we get Alzheimer's when it's time, but I get our checks. I said, okay, we'll take care of that. And so that happened and we went on and then the sticker, I call it, I call it the sticker money. Came in and, and then we still owed him some more money and he wanted that money as well. And then basically what has happened is over time through David and our conversation, he said, Steve, we're having a hard time meeting payroll. I think that's the way you put it to him. And, and I just told John Schuett a little while ago, you know, John always said, well, this day is going to be coming and, and look out for it. But I didn't know how close it was. But anyway, and the reason why I thought, you know, you said, Steve, get these folks together. Well, the whole purpose of this meeting is to, we need to squash rumors, hearsay, they say, we're going to go in this thing together and have a partnership. And from this day forward, we got to build trust with each other. And so we thought this would be a good time and David agreed, hey, tell us, tell us what, what happened? How, how did you get there from here? And then what do you need to go forth and, and how we can form a partnership with the board of squad? So that's the purpose of the meeting and hopefully we can do that. And, and this is what I call this, we may have some hard conversations today. So, but let's all stay at the table and don't get up mad. That's all.
Okay, starting with you.
Yeah, the first thing I'd like to say is I appreciate the board inviting us to this meeting so we can iron out the way that we need to go and the way y'all need to help us. We appreciate it a whole lot. And things have really changed since I got on first time in my younger years and of course it's a whole lot different now. Volunteers are not as many, very few on high end of it, on high end of the stick. And the pay providers, of course, are more in number than volunteers. We're here to, as the county administrators say, to try to get things going and have a partnership. And we appreciate your time that y'all have taken to meet with us and discuss all of this. Thank you. Again, David Williams, I'm the assistant captain and I work under you, B. And, and I've, I've served in many roles within the organization. And you say, where, how do we get here? Well, quick history lesson, Nodaway County Emergency Squad became an integrated organization where we started hiring our first employees in 2002. Matter of fact, on July the fifteenth, two thousand and two, because I was one of the first two that clocked in that one. Since that time, in this point, it's got us here in just as little as 10 years ago. We had approximately thirty-six still active volunteers running calls actively in the county of volunteers and had six employees full-time. In just 10 years' time, we have totally flipped that script to where we now maybe have six volunteers that are operational. And none of the folks at this table unfortunately are operational anymore, running calls. They're our executive board. I'm not operational anymore as well due to some medical stuff. So the ones that are only run when they're truly able to. Other than that, we now have thirty-one employees on staff who are paid providers. And of course they are there to earn their paycheck, get their money, go home, make their car payment, their mortgage, pay their light bill, pay their taxes. So it's their job. So we're technically not a volunteer organization, a service that has been for the citizens of the county for little or to nothing, or from what the county has given us graciously over the years, just does not meet that need anymore. We've done several things throughout this history since 2002 to now with inducing revenue recovery, where we actually bill the patient's insurance to try to get a certain amount of money back. I say your bill is thirteen hundred dollars for transport and patient care to the hospital. Your insurance pays eight hundred of it, then the remaining goes out into bills. And from that time to right now, we had done what's called compassionate billing, which means we send you three bills, you get them in the mail, gives you their information, whether you had insurance or not, this is what it costs. And if we don't receive anything after three bills with a previous agreement with the previous captain and a previous administrator, it's then written off. There is no trying to get any money for that cost. So we've been mainly operating with just what we got through revenue recovery. And we've got numbers for all that as far as what we get during that year as well. The money that we do get from the county and the money that we receive as of about six years ago, we entered into a contract where we provide services out of Fast C and do ambulance standby and transport there on base, where we employ the paramedics, EMTs that ride those trucks. And we provide the trucks out there to help augment the nine-one-one system. I, I bill you this much for the service, whatever I make off of that contract goes directly back into helping fund my nine-one-one operations.
So David, that's, that's one of the questions I think a lot of people have been asking. Why didn't, why did, why did really, what was the sole purpose of the executive board here decided to go into Fast C business? Was that to keep the?
Supplemental income.
That was the whole.
The whole purpose.
The whole purpose of it, yes.
And that's no longer, correct?
No, it's, we still do that.
You still do that?
Yes. That contract, right now, we, when we first did it, we were providing three trucks out there. Last year they cut it back to two trucks based upon some government overspending, imagine that. So they had to cut back services. So we're only doing two trucks out there right now. That could change and it could go back to three based upon our contract. But if they want a third, we have thirty days to comply with that part of our contract. The typical contract out there is typically a five-year contract with a one-year extension. With their current financial issues, they did what's called a bridge this year. And our current contract runs until August with two, three-month possible extensions to equal a full year until they decide to go back with a full contract at this time. And of course, new administration coming in, state department and so forth. So that's where we're at. We just entered that as of February.
And those, those trucks are the ones that have the liabilities against them. They're leased or sold?
We, we do have three leased trucks that were purchased or leased.
Those are the ones that are on.
Currently have a.
But you, you said you had two out there.
We only have two, one is sitting right now.
So where's the third one at?
Currently being rotated in the system. We have a total of eight ambulances that are owned and operated by Nodaway County Emergency Squad. We have two reserve units that are owned by our contractor or the, because we're the subcontractor. But we maintain the readiness of those two units in their house to the different locations.
So that third new ambulance that was allocated from Barfoot is housed that way?
Currently, right now, it's in proof.
And that may move to Blackstone.
And it may.
It's rotated.
It's still being used in our.
Keep the mileage equal. Not one, not run one truck to death and they have one sitting still.
So it's still a good supplement income there?
Oh, yeah. And, and that's what I was going to say, with that particular contract and of course in a public forum, I'm not, nobody would go ahead and say, this is what I'm bidding this contract. So everybody in the world knows what I asked for from the federal government to do that contract. But at the end of the day, and at the end of 12 months, that contract supports up to a month or more of nine-one-one operations.
All, all of them.
Yeah, okay. So I make money out there on that contract. And then the money that's made on that contract is rolled back into nine-one-one payroll to help pay that particular payroll. Because we have a considerable payroll with thirty-one employees.
Here's the biggest question I've got and I get asked. How come previously, how did, how did we go from, from the county funding? What was that number that, that we gave?
Last year was two fifteen. And then, of course.
And then, and then the request from this, this year has went up significantly. But that, that solved the compassionate billing you was talking about, that didn't start then. That's been going on for very long.
That's been going on since 2002.
Two, right.
And of course, your rates of what we get and how we get it back and Buddy, when we had the first meeting, he mentioned to you now that revenue recovery has what's called peaks and valleys. This month I might get four hundred dollars in on everything we ran for a particular month and how our billing company gets it billed out and how your insurance company pays. I, if, if you use the.
That's going to vary.
I'm sure you've seen how you get your bills in from any, we're just like your insurance billing central hospital and phone. Your insurance company bills, or we bill that insurance company and then they pay us.
What they want to pay.
When they, when they want to pay. So it can wax.
But, but now your request is how much to keep operating?
Eight hundred sixty-two thousand.
So the question, so the question is, how did it go from two hundred thousand in one year to eight hundred ninety-two thousand in one year?
Because you were funding me two hundred and fourteen thousand dollars with, you looked at my budget, that's only two percent of our operating.
But, but, but why did it go to eight hundred ninety-four now?
Because our revenue recovery and the monies that we had, we had no reserves left. Everything that we had in reserve is gone. And you've heard me.
But so y'all, y'all lost roughly in the neighborhood of six hundred thousand, not?
Not lost, spent.
Well, you don't have it in your budget.
Don't have it.
And now you need to replenish it, correct? So you need.
And like I say.
But what I'm saying, law, the citizens that's calling me, they're saying, how did they go from this to that in one year?
And I said, it was not in one year. We had money that was there.
So you've drawn reserves for how long, since 2002?
We did our last CD when we turned in the last one, we were doing the modifications on the building. And I call that generational money. The monies that the fine people of this county has been giving the organization for seventy-five years and we didn't have to pay out payroll, some of that money you were able to roll into a bank and earn some interest on. And I'm sure there are other departments in this county.
Oh, the same thing that the county, as we continually go into general fund?
Yes.
They depleted themselves.
We, we depleted ourselves. And the reason for that, like I said, in just 10 years.
But why didn't anybody come to the county last year and say, hey?
We came to the county in 2018 and said, this is coming.
I've got the minutes, Buddy found the minutes from the 2020 budget here.
We, this has been, this is, this is not new. It's just.
But you know the budget meeting, you know the budget meeting that we had just a few weeks ago? At the previous budget meeting, nothing of that was said. The previous year, y'all was represented by someone different, but none of that was said.
And, and looking at that, and looking over that particular budget, that budget was put forth to y'all and balanced out to twenty-two cents. And it didn't incorporate non-recoverable money that should have been put in there. I, we're losing a value.
Non-recoverable money not put in.
The revenue, the revenue recovery, it showed nine hundred and.
A bad, a bad debt that y'all wrote off. And that was not put in the budget?
It was not put in there to say, we never get that money, that we never see that.
So it showed that y'all was going to get that?
It showed that we were going to get that money.
That sounded like to me was cooking up the book.
I didn't start.
It's like me filling the balance sheet like his bank and leaving half my debt off of it.
Yeah, I, I know exactly what you're saying.
So that's how you got it. That answered the question.
And, and that's the reason we put the number to you.
So that's the fact that we have unrecoverable funds of ninety-eight thousand dollars per quarter for compassionate billing. That's four hundred thousand dollars a year.
Well, he just said it was nine hundred.
Well, I'm saying the total is, we said would be hopefully nine hundred, take four hundred off of that.
Cause you collect half and you can double that.
If, and you can get revenue recovery, waxes and wanes, like I said, it can be anywhere from fifty to sixty-five percent money recovered on your revenue recovery.
So, so let me, let me ask a question, Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind. So David, and so when y'all did the contract with Fast C, even with the contract with Fast C, hoping that you were going to supplement, you know, bring in money, you still was taking money all the time out your reserves, even with the contract? If you didn't have the contract with Fast C, it would have been coming out faster?
Yes.
He said that one month.
But it would have been one, it, it supports right now, it current. Now with the third truck out there, it's more, but right now with two trucks out there, it ends up funding about one month's worth of sales.
Actually, actually, I'm going to back up on that. When you, you're saying funding one month of payroll?
Of nine-one-one, say.
Of nine-one-one, okay, because typically we have a little bit of a surplus once we pay our people that work at Fast C. And that rolls back into nine-one-one.
But a month, month where.
If you were to add up every month surplus.
Yeah, okay. I'm just making.
That third ambulance, how much cost leasing ambulance a year?
Uh, fourteen thousand dollars a month on that lease, a five-year lease, and we're a little over halfway through it.
And we are looking to liquidate.
Yeah, we're looking to try to liquidate two of those three.
So if you do that, take that off, they had on some type of question, how much is that two hundred eighty-five?
Two sixty.
If we take the two sixty off to eight sixty, that you're requesting, or eight nine, you're requesting that, it'd make it way more difficult with the cap. Can you liquidate them things to see?
Need animal certain phone.
I ain't got nothing, I don't think your phone worth that kind of money.
That, unfortunately, that's the situation and, and I hate to say it. Lord, I've been seeing different ambulances around the Virginia area that have had some bad luck lately. I feel like I'm a lawyer ambulance chaser, trying to call them to see if they need something. But we're actively trying to find interested parties right there.
So it's up to you to do that, the company that you leased it from won't just take the ambulance back? Well, if you lease a vehicle and you fail to pay your lease payments, I know what they're, they take it back. And if y'all can't pay it, they gotta take it back. Or we, because we are y'all, y'all are up.
And like I say, of course, there's three of them. So like I say, we're actively working within them to try to liquidate those assets as well.
Mr. Bowen, you have a question?
It's a lease vehicle, so why won't they take it back?
We have not asked them right up front, will they take it back? We're looking to try to sell them outright.
But they're not yours to sell.
Their lease.
Well, if we. Lease known, if we satisfy the lease, the way it is now, if we pay off the lease, you get all three ambulance five dollars.
So it's a buy it at the end?
Yeah.
But going back to that, it's still, at the end of the day, Mr. Attorney over there, it's still a lease. And if you fail to make the lease payment, they may sell it or lease it to somebody else and you may be responsible for that, unless the amount that they get that was in your contract.
Well, it depends on what the contract terms say.
Yeah, we haven't seen, seen it yet.
And like I say, at the end of the day, it's fourteen thousand dollars a month lease. In our average monthly payroll right now with my current staffing and what we're putting on the road is twenty-seven thousand dollars.
So you have a week?
A week.
Okay. But you take a half a week out of four, four weeks getting ready that one ambulance.
And anything helps, of course, yeah.
That's a good place to start the next page here. So I know that you've, there's been discussion about compassionate billing, that that's going away. There was discussion about subscription service, which includes insurance information for those that subscribe. We've talked about ambulances, lease payments going away, all of these things reduce expense and revenue stays the same, less you collect more. Can you speak to some things which, which you all talked about to improve this situation?
Sure would be that, yeah.
Right now we're on deferred payments with the lease for the ambulances because we are actively trying to liquidate those three. That's not going to pick back up until June. Hard billing is an act, is, will be enacted May first. That's something that will also go in the paper to every citizen in Nodaway.
This Wednesday, that will be in the paper.
In addition to the subscription information, I am still researching that. I'm reaching out to a couple of neighboring counties that I know are already doing that.
I know Dinwiddie presented. The nice thing about that was, when I lived in Dinwiddie, I've been here 10 years, but we lived in there, we joined that subscription program. But the squad knew what our church was on the way there.
Yeah, that's right, that's.
We already had.
Those store information. So that, once I get that rolling, I'm hoping, I'm hoping July at the latest to get that going because there's a lot of ins and outs and a lot of legalities that our attorney needs to.
And that may be like a January first.
It could, very well.
I want to do it quickly, but again.
And like I say, we're looking at several different programs to see which one we feel is going to fit best with Nodaway County and the citizens of Nodaway as well, to make sure they're getting the best coverage they can get as well for their.
For the citizens, what, what the subscription does, if squad ride costs a thousand dollars and then the insurance pays seven hundred dollars because that citizen subscribes, that three hundred, I think goes away, is that?
It does, and there's certain stipulations and that's what we're researching legally to make sure.
In some subscriptions.
In some.
Depending on how you do it.
And then multiple trips to a certain household, how many you get a year. There's, there's several things that we're looking.
How much will one subscription cover? Will it cover four people or 10 people that live in a house? So there's a lot of ins and outs that we've got to iron out before we can put that into place, but it is something that's actively.
Well, it's an opportunity to support the squad and then if a family knows, hey, you know, that's, that's kind of like insurance. Because we know, we know your granddad's been having some trouble. So maybe if we just do this, that'll help, you know, if we have to.
And, you know, and I understand and, and I know in research and looking, talking, of course, about the emergency services tax levy, those things have been in place for multiple years around now. And I, I firmly believe that it's a good thing and, and I'm a citizen of this county, so nobody likes or wants to pay more taxes. But this is, this is a necessary service that, and that's one of the big things and, and like I said, the thing I like about this meeting, there's just a lot of citizens that don't understand what it is that we do. Just like the gentleman sitting around us here, they come to you in the big red thing, you put the wet stuff on the red stuff when it's the fire. The stuff that they do, they don't understand the dynamics of it and really don't care a lot until it affects.
Until it's done. Let me, let me ask you that. I heard Cheryl say that, that the lease payments were deferred until June or July, is that right? So are you in a word, is that accounted for when it's eight hundred ninety-two thousand? Or is it even worse than we leave and looking at because you're not currently making them pay?
No, it's that, everything you see is correct. We just defer them because of our, our current revenue status of not having the funds to.
Not having the funds to hopefully liquidate them prior.
I talked, I talked to one citizen that, actually two, one, one was on there, a lifelong PMS person. Has it been audited in the books on that? And I said, yes. He said, but who has seen the audit and who was it done by? Have you seen the audit, Bowen? I said, I'm not seeing the audit.
You've got copies of it. You've had it for over a month and a half to two months.
Yes, and it was done by Kevy Mars out of Richmond.
I've had them. How did you get them to me?
At the last meeting.
Y'all have had them since before the.
It was at the budget meeting. It was in that, it was in that.
The last two years were done by an independent outside PMS based.
All right, that, that, all right, that's not what I, I am speaking of audit, I said audit, but I mean the, I guess what we have here tonight, the actual numbers that.
The budget numbers.
The budget numbers.
You got that, it's in your, it's in your email today as of about four o'clock.
And.
Who's the, who's the twenty-five thousand dollar loan number?
Homemade simple out of Blackstone.
Homemade simple?
Yes, they also do gutter cleaning and take care of all the landscape.
One of those buildings?
One of those buildings.
I just wanted to joke down.
Yeah, I don't like it either.
And I know, and I know we're trying to, we're trying to hit form partnership. Let's, let's clear, let's clarify something. I may make sure my lawyer is back and listening to me. Y'all incorporated.
That's correct.
Virginia code does not require you to be in business. It requires us to be in business, is that correct?
Now, you talk about providing emergency services to the county citizens of Nodaway. That is correct. Nodaway County Emergency Squad Incorporated is not legally bound to run nine-one-one calls in this county.
And you started the conversation, yeah, we, we're paying for a service to you, just like what we're doing with the rest of us. We're here to talk about emergency. We're paying for a service, but we're not paying enough.
Not paying enough.
That's what the rubber meets the rug.
Yes, it does. I did want to add one more discussion.
But if we get charged for that service, Steve, and they're going to start hard billing them, you charging the citizens of the county for something, they're going to collect both.
But if we don't.
If I got insurance and, and, and May Pop ain't got no insurance, May Pop ain't got to pay, but I do. That ain't right.
That, that part of it, and that's one of the things too, when you're looking at it. And, you know, I've seen a bunch of the comments from residents and citizens of the county saying that it's not fair to the person that owns property, owns the vehicles and that person that calls nine-one-one multiple times and doesn't have either. So revenue and don't have insurance either. I'd love to say I have the answer to that one, but I think every local government has that same.
One thing I've, one thing I've heard two different things on. The do not transfer call for service. Does Nodaway Rescue Squad charge a fee for that, for that person that fell and needs help getting up, for that person that's cut themselves?
We do bill for non-transports or what you call public assist, treat and release.
Lift assists are.
Lift assist, if you have insurance and we get there and tell you, you really need to go to the hospital and they refuse and we say it gets medical advice, the bad part about that.
What technology do the squads members have with them? Do they have iPads?
Yes, well, iPads, Chromebooks, they do it all electronically.
So a person that, that doesn't have insurance, is it impossible to say that you could charge them at that moment? For that, that call? It's very difficult to say no to the person that just helped you, rather than get the bill thirty days from now.
You could have tipped, I guess. It's.
But there's many, there's many, but this.
Going to the emergency room.
We've got to, we've got to make a change for our citizens that use the squad when there's cars sitting in the driveway and uncle, uncle sitting on the porch or brother's there or dad's there.
And I agree with you a hundred percent, that public education.
So we've got to make a change and part of that is, is you've come to my house and you've helped me. You tell our Mr. Collins, this was, this was a service call. My, my heat and air guy does it, my plumber does it, my electrician does it. Here's your service call, here's what we charge for your fee, we use these kinds of materials to help you. And so it was a hundred and sixty-two fifty, can I have your card? I know that's completely outside of what you guys have done. Is that a, and this?
We do everything up to, we get the card and here's your bill. We do not bill at the time.
To your plumber, this is human life.
It is.
It's a different aspect completely. I mean, you're going to go with me on a crawl and tell this guy he doesn't have a hundred and fifty dollars to pay?
No, 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 no.
Are you going to not take it?
No, you got to take it. He's saying if he has it, you want it, you want to, you want to get that while we riding on your ambulance. You know what I'm saying? Just like it wouldn't be if you walk in the emergency.
Not hate somebody non-medical, public assist call.
Yeah, something you come in there to help, they're not going to transport.
A lot of people are falling and can't get up, need help getting up. What we consider public assists, we do bill those out and of course we bill insurance and we send the bills just like we've been doing compassionate billing. And then there's a charge for that that says we can bill up to four hundred and fifty dollars for one of those calls.
In that point, you all go and we all fear the standards, how many times you go to the nursing home facilities?
Yes.
Do you charge the patient or do you charge?
The patient is charged. The facility, I, I'd love to be able to, but when they call nine-one-one, it, it's a considered acute emergency.
And that, they have better records there, so that's, that's one of the higher percentages that the squad's going to collect because the records are correct, already at the nursing.
And it's, it's just like.
How many paid employees is it?
Thirty-one right now, currently sixteen full-time, fifteen part-time, and I'm, I'm a little short. I could.
So the average, the average person making somewhere in the vicinity of fifty-eight thousand?
Um, I'd have to get Cheryl to pull that up.
Thirty-one an hour?
Um, that would be the paramedics start out anywhere from about twenty-nine to our capos about thirty-four dollars an hour.
If.
ETS are about nineteen to about twenty-four an hour.
When I used to day, when I used to day trade, when I used to day trade a little stock and I see a lower dollar stock, finished stock, obviously it was coming from either a new company or failing company. So I tried to figure out what it was, what was failing on it, and the first thing I did was, you can even have a five oh one C. Paying exactly a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year, or in that stock, someone paid them two and a half million per one. And they didn't give a damn about the, the, the people underneath, what, no.
Yeah.
So, so going back to the total figure, you, your average pay is about. Roughly fifty-eight thousand dollars per employee, whether they be part-time or full-time, whether it be more than the part-time, is that about right?
That would probably be right, right? Like I said, we averaged it out, right now, weekly payroll is twenty-seven thousand, nine hundred and forty-five dollars a week.
Divide that by thirty-one, that'd take exactly.
Yeah, and.
That depends on the overtime, Steve.
Well, like I said, here's basically.
Off your budget was a million.
Our payroll cost and that's insurances, um, or payroll taxes, everything, four hundred and nineteen thousand, one hundred and eighty-nine dollars and twenty cents. Straight off QuickBooks, and that's just from January one.
Does that include benefits that they get?
That's four hundred and ninety-five dollars.
Yes.
But that's got to be added into the million five hundred thousand.
So this is a million five, excluding.
Excluding, but add that too, bar foot too, because these days it's employees. It comes to a million eight hundred and forty-three thousand five hundred dollars.
We did send information and, and both had that too, to separate out, because. The, the bar foot contract is self-sustaining with those employees. So we backed out that payroll cost, I sent him an, an average invoice, like what our invoice was last month to, um, Fast C. What we billed them, what we got, and then what we paid out to run that contract, and then the surplus, like I said. Last month, I'd have to look at it, I've got it here, was like.
Well, we, you, you don't need to.
Yeah.
Because we know that they're paying for themselves.
Yes.
And generating one month with the income for you.
Yep, and generating revenue.
Yep.
Well, back to when you were talking about the hourly rate, I've talked to several counties. Is the reasoning behind y'all paying the eight to twelve dollars more an hour than the surrounding counties for retainage purposes?
I'd say that your numbers are way off. At eight to twelve dollars an hour, if I, so you're saying, and, and we could ask, and I know that my neighbors just up the road. Pay a little bit less than we do, but like I said, trying to keep overtime costs down and having full-time versus part-time employees. The average EMS provider works two and three jobs right now at different locations. And then you want to have guaranteed people in free trucks.
They're working two, they're working two or three jobs and their average pay is fifty-eight thousand?
Yes, sir.
Well, then they making big money then?
You just never get home.
Well, they, they, they don't really need the money, so like if they, if your average payroll is fifty-eight thousand dollars, either some of them is getting paid really big money when other ones are working for chicken feet.
Yeah, that's, that's, but that person's working a hundred hours a week.
But he's also making, but, but he making a hundred grand.
Making a hundred grand, that's right. But like I told y'all, in the one meeting that we had, and I challenge anybody in this room to get up and travel with me. Get up, let's go inside this room and walk one hundred miles in any direction you go in, where you stop at, you ask them, are you full staff with your EMS providers right now? Have you got all the people you need? The answer's going to be no everywhere you go.
Emphatically. We learned that when we went to.
Yeah, we're not turning out enough providers to cover the need. And like I said, every provider, I don't know of any one provider hardly that works for us full-time that doesn't have a second or third job themselves. And our part timers, we are their second or third job.
What would be the advantage to assisting the squad? With funding, with conditions, as compared to the county, one of the options that Mr. Hyde had was stand up three squads. Possibly run them out of the fire stations. What's the advantage of, of helping the squad and what are the citizens? Can you, can you explain that, what the advantage is?
Well, I think right now, and like I said, I, I don't think this is a immediate overnight fix at, by any means. Um, propping us up right now, let's continue operations, keep on. You call nine one one, you get an ambulance there. And then I think there's definitely fine tuning. It's going to have to be done over the next year to eighteen months to work it out perfectly so that. You as our county government can see it, and like I say, with that more oversight, that I think is very important so that y'all understand. And the citizens now of this county understand what that resource is and what it means to keep and have it in place. Because like I said, whether they calling you or not, saying they're in that trouble, somebody's got to be there standing by and getting paid while they're doing it. They're not getting paid for being on the call, they're being also paid to be prepared for that next call coming in.
Some simple math, it might have been what Mr. Hyde provided, was about three million dollars for three squads, whole county real estate.
That would be.
With VRS employees, so you get about a million back maybe in your revenue recovery, maybe a little more.
Yeah.
Um, so now you're spending two million dollars. So this scenario that we're talking about, as you presented with your budget request, eight hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars. So one point one million dollar difference, and you have a continuous service, there's no downtime, just, you know, things make sense.
And with that, like I said, currently right now, because of our, our current revenue situation, we had to cut our service back in the fact. That we're providing one ambulance where we had been providing two and a Q R V. So the nu- nu- numbers we gave you was basically to fund one ambulance. Which is just. And then we're hoping our other revenue recovery, Fast C, billing, and so forth, will help us fund that other one. Because the citizens need, and we can tell you, since cutting that.
Well, mutual aid, the mutual aid questions have come up.
Yeah.
We're all on the other boards and things like that, and those, other counties have asked.
Has, has the tax level ever came back as in went away from a surrounding candidate that implemented? Once that tax.
Never went away, but I, I have heard, and I don't know exactly which one, so don't quote me on this, I know some had went down, not went up.
You know, when they put the poite in over that, they, they put a toll over that, to pay for it.
Yep.
That's a lot of years ago, that thing been paid for. And now they call it maintaining.
I've been told this.
But they still try and screw, so we could put one right there. So, so he, he, here's my question that, as a citizen of the county, if I'm going to have a tax levy imposed upon me. To provide a, 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 a public service or get a public service provided to. Why am I doing that through a tax levy in, in my, and whether I got any money or got insurance rather or don't, I'm still going to be charged? Because at that point, you, does that make sense?
Well, no, you don't. Yeah, yeah, say it again.
So we, if we, if we do this tax levy to help fund this thing, get the county involved in it, and we're charging everybody, including me, because I'm a citizen of Nottaway.
Right.
But then I'm paying for y'all's services because you're going to do, start doing hard billing and make me pay if I ride the ambulance.
And, and what I'd say there is if, if, that would be the education piece for the citizens of Nottaway County to understand the importance of the service.
That's what I want to know.
And would that be saying, you've got to provide that service.
Yeah, and the levy, the levy ordinance will always remain.
Yeah.
The number of pennies can change.
Yes.
So if you recover revenue at a much greater percentage than they owe now.
You don't need that, you can lower that.
And you're coming down from, from, say it's ten cents.
And that's y'all's job.
Then you're coming down as a.
Right, right, I understand.
So you can, you can take their citizen's burden by improving revenue collection.
But I'm still paying twice if, if I'm, if I've got to pay, say I don't have any insurance, I get a deal of five hundred dollars. They send me a bill, I don't pay it, they send the collection. Ultimately, I pay the five hundred dollars, but I'm also paying my tax levies, so I'm paying for the services.
So, so are you an advocate for a continued compassion billing or are you an advocate for?
Hard billing, but if you're going to do hard billing, then you can't charge your taxes for fun, because you're not paying twice.
Yeah, you can't.
You're not paying twice, you're just taking both things to make one payment.
It's, yeah, but if I'm paying you five hundred dollars out of my money, out of my bank account to give me a ride to Chippenhain. And you're also charging me ten cent extra on my real estate tax, I'm paying you twice.
You're looking at it, you're looking at it. You're looking at it like a, like a profitable business.
It's not, it's not, it's no different.
Do they have a profitable business? We don't turn a profit. You, you say you're not profitable?
Yeah.
But that's what I said while I go back to five oh one C, depending on what you pay people. I mean, you can profit yourself, right? I love it with dollars. You can make it, you can make it not profitable.
Well, I can assure you, like current salaries, because we had this.
Well, that's why I was talking to the.
How much we pay, I'm not the top, I'm not the bottom, I'm a little bit above midline in what current EMS professionals make in Southside Virginia. And there's already a shortage of us. So I can tell you, if you come in and say, well, you need to cut them by, you said six, seven dollars an hour, get ready to dial nine one one, it ain't nobody coming.
No, she said what, she's, she thought you were paying more to retain, to keep them.
Much an hour though, I mean.
You, you know, sometimes, you know, I, I get complaints, eighty percent of our budget, seventy-nine, eighty percent of our budget goes to school system. Well, what about the people who don't have any children? You know, they're paying, they're paying a fix that time.
Everybody with people that children are fragile.
Right, 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 you don't have any children, you go up anyway, and that's just, that's part of keeping a society.
That's part of the government's duty. That's what it's part of.
Like I say, we're at that point now with a service that. You go across the Mississippi River and go that direction, they've never heard of what a volunteer E M T or paramedic.
That's the next, next topic. Speak to a Paladin or a D, D R T, paid staff, paid squads. How does that compare to what Nottaway County Emergency Services could still continue to provide?
Well, they could come in and do the exact same service for you that we're asking or trying to do. We're wanting to do just enough to get by and get the service at a good quality service for the county. They can come in, do the same thing, but they're for profit. They're not going to stay in this county, they're going to want to, that guy that said that his people there here to work and ride the ambulances. At the end of the day, he's wanting to make twenty dollars an hour off of that guy too.
So they're going to charge, they're going to hard bill.
You're going to pay a lot extra, yes, sir.
Oh, yes.
They're going to hard bill to collect on site like I'm calling.
They.
He said, are they going to hard bill?
No, that, well, yeah, they hard bill.
Contractor.
Yeah.
Would, would they help, would they collect it at the service call if they do not transport?
They do, try to do the same thing, and then they will sue.
But it's going back, it's going back to what he said, if you've got somebody that needs to be transported, and they ain't got two pennies wrapped together, you still got to transport. They still a human being needing.
It's just like if you go read disclaimer, when you walk through the door to the emergency room, it says, you will not be turned away based upon your ability to pay. You have a legal responsibility. The county has a legal responsibility.
It used to be like that. St. Francis had a sign up at like that, and they done them all.
It's still there. They have to.
They have to see it.
By law, they got to see it. In an emergency room.
So a for-profit service would be twenty percent above the cost primarily?
Least.
Well, I'm, I'm looking at an RFP from Cumberland County that, that recently.
That was a two million like D R T.
Two point one. Um, their paramedic cost is sixty dollars.
Per hour.
Per hour. So that right there will tell you, midline with, if you're paying a paramedic thirty dollars, they're making thirty dollars on that paramedic. Um, for their E M Ts they were charging, or their RFPs, or intermediates were fifty-five and their advance at fifty, their E M Ts.
Well, if they just asked for more, Steve, because they didn't get the half, if they asked for double, they would have made bucks because the half they paid them would have paid too much.
Well.
That's, that's the point I was trying to make, they're trying to make a profit.
Yeah, they're, they're.
We're not trying to.
D R, D R T is, Cumberland's trying to provide.
Get by, yeah, provide service and get by.
The county's not making.
No, county's not making nothing. It's costing them a boatload of money, two point seven million dollars a year.
The point that I was trying to get you to make is that, that's not an option that we want to pursue.
I don't think.
Because you've increased the cost to the citizens because it's a for-profit.
That much more, correct. Yes, if you're doing contracted services with a for-profit agency compared to us. We've been here serving this county for seventy-five years and not, not getting anything and hardly billing anything even since two thousand and two, just compassionate.
What is, what, what is the difference in the fire department and the EMS in respect to? They are a hundred percent still volunteering.
Well, not, it, it's coming.
Yeah, well, we've been saying too. Dinwiddie is, is, right, I think the majority is paying down.
Right, but, but for our county, for our county, for our county right today, if they were to get any of this tax levy, would they're not? For them to operate, they, they don't, do they charge, do they charge to put a high fire?
They're starting to.
Do y'all have compassionate billing or you have hard bill? Compassionate.
They're part of, they're part of this conversation as far as.
Yeah.
Right. So they're, they're insured, the homeowner's insurance will pay y'all, you guys directly to the homeowner.
Insurance.
Insurance base.
Two hundred and fifty dollars if you ask.
Two hundred and fifty dollars, get you, get you one fire truck half full of diesel fuel.
So, so here's a, here's a.
I don't believe I'd be in this.
That's two hundred and fifty dollars in several years is going to have to change because the fellows riding that truck right now are receiving an income. But it, it's going to, it's going to change. That's coming too. Like I said, unfortunately, we're at a reactive moment for EMS. I strongly advise you to be very proactive with what's coming.
And that's why the emergency is going to say fire and EMS.
So, so let me ask you this, Dave, this is tough, this is a tough question. We should, we should depend on a contract, think about it. I mean, but, but, so let's pretend Fast C is done, you know, Trump, you know, shut it down. Um, and then we say, well, you know what, we don't just keep giving you two fifteen, two thirteen, whatever. But how long is that going to make you? How, how long would Nottaway County Emergency Squad? Next month?
Yeah. Yeah.
What's the difference in y'all needing this money and my business needing this money, and y'all going to a bank and saying, hey, we need eight hundred and nine four thousand dollars?
Look, well, we.
Would you do that?
We, we've already been to the banks and we have an operating line of credit, there's just not enough to keep it through. As you say, that feels about it, actually we're working on it now to a, a certain amount, but. Banker's sitting in the room, you got to have collateral, you got to have that business, showing that business to be in a positive manner to do that. Right now, we can't do that.
You can't show the repayment ability, but you got to collapse.
Well, there's collateral.
You got billing, you got.
But that just means, come get this in about eighty-nine months with that little bit of what you give me, it's going to meet.
Well, then you get enough, but you ain't got the repayment ability.
So if we're going to have a. You got a bucket, you got a bucket with a hole in it.
Oh, yeah. Well, we're going to seal off the hose, you're filling it up.
Big hole.
And then going out the side. So your question is, is how long does this part of the EMS levy stay available to the squad?
Once they start doing hard billing and collecting the money.
Then it just becomes a math problem. Do your budget every year, and there are certain folks in this room that they want, want their shares of levy too, which means you got to fix this side. So do these guys have a, they want to buy a truck or pump a truck?
I, I, I don't like to assume, I don't make any projections, but I, I, I'll be running that thing when that tax levy is put on them citizens of Nottaway County.
It'll never come down.
It'll never come down. It won't never come down.
Well, you're in a position to advocate for that.
And I wouldn't be, I wouldn't think that would be the squad's fault. That would be the.
That's the service's fault.
Well, that would be. Because if, if our revenue gets to a point where we don't need the money, it would be y'all's responsibility.
If that's going to be the board's responsibility, that's what we want to discuss for a few minutes, is the board being more involved in having county employees.
But that's going to be, that's going to be that, we're done with this part of it, so.
And with.
Citizens, the citizens of this county, everyone that I've talked to, when you talk about eight hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars going to the squad. Have said, unless the county has control of the squad, is more oversight, they don't want to do. They're concerned about that kind of money and, and what Bo talked about from year over year.
Mm-hmm.
What are your thoughts on how this partnership moves forward? Have you all discussed that?
We have.
Your, your board, your board membership?
And, and that's what I said, we very much talked about that, and that's why I said, this isn't an overnight fix. That's why we said anywhere from twelve to eighteen months. Get into this thing, of course, you're saying starting to prop us up out of the general fund money fairly quickly. We're looking, and I don't know exactly what.
And we don't, that's, that's part of the problem is, so we, we go to, you know, the budget starts July one. We're not going to collect this money until November, December.
Yeah, that's right, yeah.
So we're going to go, every time we do that, can we take money out of the bank? It's earning four percent, we're at four.
And, and, and I'm not being.
Luckily, luckily, we're taking, we're taking income, you're taking acid, which also taking.
And I'm not being rude with this next statement, because at the end of the day, if we don't get it, we can't survive. We shut the doors, and it's still your responsibility.
And that's, and that's the citizens, the citizens need to understand.
Yeah.
And that's what I was trying to get at with comparing VRS employees, three squads run owned by the county.
Yes.
And then talk about the contract providers, okay, so they're, so they're for profit. So you, you have to get the citizens to understand that Nottaway Emergency Squad is the best deal in regards to tax.
Very much so. And still it is, and even with the folks you see sitting at this table, there's nobody lining up to replace us as our executive.
Well, and that's a, and that's a good, that's a, it's not a good thing, but it's a timing thing.
If you were somebody else with a headache, would, would, I mean, why would you want to be involved in a, in a, in a, in a.
That goes not just to the executive committee, but trying to find. That goes not just to the executive committee, but trying to find people that even wanted to become E M Ts or paramedics anymore. Our numbers are steadily.
Well, they just, they just want, and that person, just that employee, that paid person's not going to come stay to, you know, till eight o'clock at night.
Well, this is the thing, the people you see sitting at this table, the people you see surrounding us, we've done it for as many years as we have because of the passion and the love.
It's a passion, it's your county.
Started as a hobby, a way that we interacted with each other, helped the community. And a bunch of us sitting in here have created careers now. Where I work, where I know people around this room are working. And I, our careers were developed through our passion and our volunteerism. We just don't have that anymore. And it's not saying anything bad about Notaway. Like I said, that is everywhere in Southside Virginia right now. Everywhere.
Speak to, speak to the nature of your conversation in regards to the membership of the board of Notaway Emergency Squad.
As far as.
How this, how the county becomes a part of this.
Part of that. Well, I agree wholeheartedly. There should be at least one board member and either Buddy sitting on our executive board. Because like I said, I'm a citizen of this county. If you put that kind of money in it, I definitely think there needs to be oversight and a view in it. Every daily operations. And like I said, we have been very transparent over the last two months with numbers, information, costs. Like I said, and I laughed, I told somebody the other day, we don't get enough money to steal. It's not that. I mean, we, everything we got goes back out the door to operating services.
Well, you say you didn't get enough money to steal. I know people steal bubble gum and I know people who steal media. Y'all dealing with media. So y'all get plenty of money to steal.
Not after I spend it for what it costs us.
Not if you ain't paying the bills, you ain't spending them. If you ain't paying the bills, they ain't getting spent. Blackstone one time had a big surplus over there. And a business in Blackstone said, the town won't pay me my money. They owe seventy thousand dollars to me for four months. I said, well, I reckon they can have a big surplus. I can't do it if I don't pay my bill. Same thing. That's been years ago, by the way. But you know what I'm saying? When you made the comment, there's not enough to steal, always plenty to steal. And it's a whole lot of these citizens in Notaway County think that it's been so. I'm just going to be honest with you.
We got two years with the audits that will prove that it hasn't been stolen.
It's.
But we also got eight hundred and ninety-four thousand dollar request. And before it was only two hundred thousand in just one year. That's the difference with it.
Right. Before we ran out of generation money.
Where our money ran out, where we had monies, like monies that we got back during COVID. We use that to prop us up, to pay.
David, I, I asked, I asked you the same question that Bo had asked us a lot of. The reason, tell, the last year, I think the, the, what was it called? The med box? What was it called? Drug box, drug box was a big issue on each, each fire department, each emergency squad, many fire departments.
Around the state of Virginia that happened.
So the, the person that came in now, should they have asked us for more money then?
Yes.
Yes, yes, yes.
And did they not do it because of the drug box or what?
No, I, I just don't get that. I mean, I, I mean, it, it looks like you went and hold just like quick, like, and that's why the procession looked like something was stolen.
Is that what I'm saying? It's like you hear and I was like.
That's the reason people calling them asking.
Yeah. And that's what I'm saying. The budget you were handing, when I get to, got to looking at them, projected versus actual, you were given a budget that said projected revenue recovery, when we didn't come anywhere close to that.
I don't understand the purpose of that. Was that so that person could look like they were running a cash flow?
Answer that, give it a.
Going back to what the previous conversation was, this is just my two cents. And then we'll talk about it with both, both, uh, board. I would like to see a board member sit on it. I would like to see Buddy sit on it. And I would like to see a citizen who has an extensive EMS background sit on it.
I would also like to see some members of the fire department sit on it. Because they all work together.
Why? Why?
Because this is a fire and EMS levy.
Fire and EMS tax levy.
We've been suffering seven to five years.
But if you do something like that, then this goes to be fair. Then one of them needs to be all right for that.
Now, this, that, that's changed a little bit because we've learned that the, it's not just ten cents anymore. It's this year, the, the board of supervisors says, okay, EMS gets seven cents, fires get three cents. So the money is split. Now, who gets what is based on the success of each department as far as their cash flows, their ability to, to not require additional levy money. So there's some reason there that, that, okay, fire comes on, one fireman, say, and oversees what's going on with the squad. So then, then next year, the levy is divvied up again.
Yeah, it could be a.
We had, we had, we had, we had a citizen suggest that a mutual aid person from another county, uh, could be that citizen. Because there, you know, I've had several other counties ask me, what's going on, Bill? Why, why are we crossing the river? Why are we coming, why are we coming down four six if we hadn't been doing that? So that's another, that's a mu, another EMS mutual aid person.
And honestly, we've typically been the one doing mutual aid to others, but.
Well, that's, that's one, that's. They were all, they were all very, they were always all very kind of that.
Yeah.
Privately, they, they pull these things.
And we're talking about with mutual aid.
Yeah, of course, you can have those days where the nine one B, nine one one B's just jumps up and bites you. The other day we had, we were staff good, us, Berkle, but from eleven o'clock in the morning until six o'clock in the evening, we had thirteen responses in the county.
Yes.
And within two and a half to three hours, eight of those came in. We had all of our resources out. We had Ludenburg County here. We actually had Alberta in Notaway County because Amelia couldn't send anybody and Ludenburg couldn't send anybody else.
So you, but you bumped back as a first aid, you bumped back to one unit.
One ambulance and one two.
Is that, is that for, is that for, for structure? Is that for station?
Just, just crew to Blackstone, one unit.
One unit.
And we had no real warning of that. It just went to that because they had to. But then you've got Berkle's first responders picking up.
There's, well, there's two of them, I think, that are picking up. They've got their paid crew and then they got a volunteer crew that they've been able to get there now.
Because we have less ambulances, they're calling mutual aid more.
Can, can you, can you call like the one that bar foot if you need them?
No.
No, not at this time. They are not real mutual aid. That's a total difference.
Are you talking about the ambulances we put out there or the one or?
Oh, you're talking about the ambulances we put out there?
Yes.
We cannot pull them away from that contract during contract hours.
That's a, that's a for-profit.
So even if they're doing nothing, if they have no cause for, but you cannot call.
If they leave operations shut down for that federal facility.
Well, God forbid, and y'all been through it many times, that there was a horrific accident that required several ambulances.
NASCARs.
What, what, yes, what's the, what's the plan? What if they can't? My hell, we don't need no mutual aid.
Mutual aid.
It's set up. Even if we had. The neighbor counties come in and help us. That's what their neighbor counties come in and help them. It's like a big, like you throw.
So you don't think, do, do you think it's been a loss of service only having one ambulance?
Yes, yes.
It's got to be.
Yes, absolutely. And, and I, I've talked to.
And you, and, and the reason for this is the money situation?
Will, how many guys you got working for you on the?
For free?
For free.
None.
All right. The guys that are working for you. Say you've got money, how many, how many you got? Two, two? All right. Well, you can't pay one on this week. Is he still going to come to work?
Way I treat my guys, they come work me.
You spread fertilizer in many ways.
But no, I understand, you understand what I'm saying.
And, and that's where we at. Because like I said, at the end of the day, my employees draw their paycheck to go home and keep their lights on.
They got deals to.
That's how they pay their bills. This is their career. They're not volunteers. They don't do it for free.
But if they ain't working, they're not getting paid. And if they're not getting paid, they're not working. So my point here, my point here, only having one ambulance staff right now is a money situation.
Yes.
And it's a burden to our localities around us. They're having to provide.
They're taking up the slack.
And I go back to one question y'all mentioned during our budget session. It's like, if you are not legally bound to run nine one one calls, can you explain to the general public why you are not legally bound? Because most of them think that's what you're.
Because that particular, like I say, we are not part of Notaway County Government. We are Notaway County Emergency Squad Incorporated. We are a private entity. We have no legal obligation to the citizens of Notaway County to run EMS calls.
What about when you get a tax levy money?
When you get tax levy money.
It's not going to change.
Unless it changes, that rule doesn't change technically, but that's not what we want.
We don't go get the money to buy itself.
That, that's.
The reason I'm asking, the reason I'm asking that question is that if you're not legally bound, we don't have an ambulance. If, if something happens in two months and y'all can't run anymore, Notaway County doesn't have an ambulance.
That's kind of why we're saying it's pretty important we get this money so we can continue service.
It was pretty important that we knew before a month.
In two thousand and eighteen, we came and said, things are getting bad. We need more money.
And so like these things were getting bad in two thousand and, oh, in two thousand and two. Oh, we had to start billing, we had to start.
Y'all had to play, right?
Yeah.
And I mean, this isn't new. We've gone to meetings with the whole state, this whole region is experiencing the same.
Yes, ma'am.
But it's like going to the bank and saying, hey, I'm going to build a half a million dollar house, but my credit sucks. You're going to give me the money?
No.
No.
Okay. If they ain't got the repayment ability, you can have, you can have this good credit and we still ain't going to get it, right, Mr. Bank?
But we go back to, I'm not questioning everybody's dedication, the loyalty, all y'all've done over the years. These people that live in this county deserve somebody to come and get them.
You're exactly right.
Call nine one one.
And that's, that's what we base everything we've ever done on.
That's, that's one of the reasons I.
They deserve the fire department too, and they cannot be left out of this discussion.
I want to say something. I, I've told Steve, I've told somebody else, I had a dream about this last night. No lie. I dreamt about this meeting. And this is what I came up with.
In the dream?
In the dream. The citizens of Notaway need to decide what they want in the form of emergency service. Do they want twenty-four seven? What do they want? The citizens have to decide. They need to tell us what they want. They need to come to the board meeting and say, we want three squads or two squads on duty. We want fire departments available with when we need them. I for one can tell you about that. And I've, I've written on the squad, my family members have written on the squad, the fire departments. Can you talk about mutual aid when my house burned down? Victoria, Cambridge, Berkle, Crew, Blackstone. There were firefight departments at that night. And the people need to decide, what do you want? Don't come and, excuse me.
Bitch.
Yeah.
You can say it, buddy.
I mean, I get a phone call, why, why is the landowners have to do all of this? Well, tell the state of Virginia to give us a power to raise money some other way. We don't have another way. And so if you want this service, you're going to have to pay for it.
And that's part of the education piece. Yes, sir. To the citizens and understanding what the service is now. Because like I said, and I said, it's been an expectation to get it for free.
That's right.
For seventy-five years. It's not free anymore. Now, of course, yes, that is on the burden of the taxpayer. But anything that this county provides to the citizens of this county is done at a cost. I don't see nobody bringing anything down here you guys for free and say, hey, give it out to the county. Y'all got to earn it just like anything else.
Mr. David, let me go back to my other question. You said free. So I want this twenty-four hour service.
Do you want?
Absolutely. All free state. But so we can have other localities when we not need it, like they would have. But we want to impose a tax levy on them to pay for it. That's what I understand. If you want it, you got to pay for it. But it goes back to me saying, if I don't have insurance, well, I do have insurance. And if I do, I'm paying free. Why should I have to pay that tax levy and my trip to the, to the, to the hospital?
Well, the.
So if we're going to do the tax levy, do we still charge? Yeah, because if not, they can't make money.
And if you don't do, if you don't charge or we don't do the other forms of revenue recovery, go ahead and start paying three point four million dollars for three. And don't even include the dime for the guy sitting behind you. Because that's what it's going to cost for three ambulances.
That's owned by the county, paid for by the citizens of this county, V R S, all of that. Then you could say, all right, no charge.
Right.
And then you go back to the revenue source.
And you still got to.
You go back to the revenue source, which citizens are complaining, but they don't want solo. That's revenue source. They don't want a day to summer. That's revenue source. So where else? Because over the years, we don't have businesses that generate a lot of revenue for the county. So where's it going to come from?
It's got to come from the tax and it comes from the poor souls that got to pay.
It, yeah.
And they're already having a hard time.
I agree. I'm going to tell you something else that went with it. This has been right many years ago. We had some significant donations. We put in reserve. We also added the addition to crew because we needed it. We had to have it. That money paid for that. But we haven't gotten those significant donations in a long time. Yeah?
And I believe.
You might send me fifty dollars this year for supportive of what's fifty dollars.
David mentioned it, generational wealth, and it's going away. The younger generation are not feeling profit. They don't go to church, so they don't believe in giving back to others. And they, that, that segment is gone.
Well, to go with Bo, what you're saying and what Dickie's saying, right to service. Bo, they're not paying the tax to come get you. They're paying the tax for you to be there, for you to be there.
Right, I understand.
That's what, I mean, that's what, and because everybody at this table don't want to down that way.
No.
No, no.
You don't want to, you don't want to.
But I sure do want to sleep good, like knowing that they're there waiting. You don't think?
But you have any kids?
Right.
Yeah, I agree with that.
And, and so I know what you're saying about paying it. It looks like you're paying it twice, but really you're not paying it twice. You're paying it from them to be there ready. That's what you're paying for.
But you're still paying.
Yeah, oh, yeah. That's right. Yeah, you're paying.
And either way they bill.
That's right.
And you're paying the tax and then they bill you.
Right. And it's the same way.
The idea is that if you did not do the bill, then that, that it would have to go to three and a half.
There's no, there's no difference in the sheriff over that. You, but, but, but paying officers to be there, if I say.
And like I said, that.
And hopefully we don't need them, but we know we will.
It's for the, that. Standing that one ambulance and then working on our revenue recovery and other means of revenue to come in to support that second one. And then Brian's sitting over there with Berkle, he's doing what he's got to do to put his at least one on the road that's costing him.
Sit so quietly, I'm going to forget.
I would, by the way.
It's a rare moment.
My, my opinion, Mr. Chairman, I think we've heard enough. We need to give some old people opportunity to.
There's, we didn't finish the, the one topic. We got, so I let it go. Membership of the board, how big is the board? Right now it's seven?
Currently, we're missing one member, right because it's made.
So you'll subtract two or you're going to add two so the board becomes nine?
I'd say definitely at least add.
Add, um, I'd say one, one of you board members, but a half, like somebody recommended.
Okay, so, so the citizen, uh, citizens have said control. Two members of a nine-member board is not controlled in, in regards to nine hundred thousand dollars. The other thing in your, your bylaws, uh, there's no dissolution clause at the end if you guys cease to exist. Generally, there's some resolution through assets of a nonprofit, whether those are donated to some other squad, whether those are donated to the county, whether those are sold and, and given, approached, given to the Red Cross.
Well.
So in your bylaws, we have to figure that.
I think that can be addressed. And I've talked to the captain, said you've been here for sixty-three years.
All of a sudden you got tax dollars coming into you.
And that's what I'm saying. I don't see things, and that's why I'm saying twelve, eighteen months, this is going to be involved and changing things. And I don't see a problem with that clause coming into play so that this organization, if it were to come to that, goes out with his head hung high. There's no way in the world I'd say.
Once, once it stopped through with our former, um, attorney, Jack Oswald, and we asked him, why it's not in there? And then we'll also talk to you.
And this is just ones I've, generally, there's a, they call it a resolution clause. A disposal, whatever you want to do. There's something that happens to those assets of the nonprofit.
Our only clause is in there that we'll do a yearly evaluation that says, we will be, be providing two ambulances twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. And if you're unable to meet those guidelines, we're to approach the county law. And that's, that's where we'll be.
Mr. Chairman, let me, let me ask this board something. Let me ask this board something. Let's pretend, I mean, because you, you can put a board member on that board, okay? Let's pretend they had one point two million dollars. This, one, one of y'all was on that board. And they say, hey, we can balance the budget. We're going to take six hundred thousand dollars off the, six hundred thousand dollars out of the general fund this year. And then we have to take six hundred thousand dollars out next year. So you just burnt one point two. Would y'all have done that tax levy this year knowing that two years down the road, they were going down, they were going to go down? You would have? I don't, I don't know if you would have or not.
I don't believe it.
I, 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 I'm being honest with you because I've been on the board.
I was getting ready to, I was getting ready to ask this question, Steve. I was getting ready to say, for the safety of the citizens of Notaway County, after Thursday, if we going to help them and decide how we going to happen and what we going to do? If we give them a check, would they immediately put that other ambulance up there and crew of Blackstone, whoever needed, so we at least have two right now?
Yeah, right, right, right.
It'd be much different.
You're not, you're not, you're not talking. You're not. You're not, you're not, you're not, you're not somebody waiting for the tax levy. You gotta do something now.
We gotta do something now.
Well, but but there's also.
That's what's allocated in the budget.
That's right. Well, they, one place it does come from, come from the general fund.
So the third, the third piece.
Put it up there.
So it doesn't, it doesn't sound like we've got agreement on on what control is in regards to nine members on the board, two of which are camp. Uh, we did agree on clauses in regards to the bylaws. Yes, the squad happens.
We agreed to talk to the.
We agreed that that can be looked at.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Uh, you got an old man with an old back and a bladder. Y'all have a bathroom.
Yeah. Buddy, you look up the stairs and turn left.
Thank you. And as far as the number of the board, I would, I would defer in that. Our captain head is the authoritative person who appoints the board, and if he wants to look at it.
You don't want, you don't want, you were, Paul was very vehement, no firemen. So other citizens, what's that? What, do you want four more counties? Do you want four county, four squad? The problem to have is this is the taxpayers' money coming into your, a substantial amount of taxpayer money. So, you know, we have to meet their requests, and we can't do it.
Well, I would, I would, I would certainly suggest that it be written in that, in that agreement and bylaws that if they dissolve, then whatever assets they had, it's a nonprofit, they can't take, they can't get none. They take it to the county. County will be only.
As part of, as part of that.
That's part of that.
So what you're gonna look, the other, the final part of this is there will be an MOU, a memorandum, memorandum of understanding that talks about hard billing, talks about, um, the county's money coming in to support at least one squad. That's our obligation. Talk about the the bylaws, so talk about the board, so talk about always having at least two squads on duty so that, we've talked about a lot tonight. Had a few little heated moments. Well, we gotta put it in writing, and everybody kind of agreed, have our attorneys look at it and say, okay, for those nine or eight hundred and ninety-six thousand, nice, seven thousand dollars, the squad agrees, this is gonna happen, this is gonna happen, this is gonna happen, and the county says, all right, well, we'll do this amount monthly as we go, for a period of time. And as your changes come in, we can say, okay, now the citizens piece isn't quite as much as it was because this has changed. And that's kind of.
Or more, it could go either way.
It could go either way.
To the, to the, to the regard of putting equal other people numbers-wise to their seven that they have, I think three would be plenty, and here's the reason. Because if they, if they.
So you're a ten-member board?
Yeah. And if they, and if, and if the three came back to us, one of the three, and and said, look, we're funding them, but we don't think they're allocating the money correctly.
Right, yeah.
Well, all they gotta do is recommend the board funds, cut the money out.
Because that's an oversight coming in, you being there. I agree.
So that's part of the memorandum.
Yeah.
Okay, I tell you one other thing, Bert, Bert the board, in my case, being the chairman of the board, I do not get a vote unless it's a tie.
Okay. So that's, uh, it's, it's not three of ten, it's three of nine voting seats.
Another question I have on this, this, uh. Extra people we put, your people, put them on that board.
They're not my people.
But if they be in Notaway, when we have issues other than finance.
They're a member, they're a member of your executive board.
Because we do, we just like.
We need closed sessions for personnel.
Personnel matters, hiring, firing, corrective actions.
Um, they're a member of the board.
They're a member of the board.
They want to. But but you're done. The, the one thing that bothers me, I mean, it's, I think the board, I think you don't put, I'm just throwing this out there, Buddy, and and I agree with one of these board members. And then you decide about the citizen thing because they're citizens.
They are.
They're citizens. They're not getting paid. We, we, we're elected. They're not elected. They're citizens. So if, what I'm getting at is, you could put the wrong citizen on that board.
I would say that citizens have.
Yeah, even mine, that all of us sitting here too on the board are not paid for being on the board.
Right, right.
So I would have to say that that the citizen would have to say, and that's what I said earlier, an extensive EMS background.
That doesn't really prove anything.
And then they add this.
Too many bad apples in the basket.
The person that I particularly got in mind is of not, they, they live in this community, but they never was a Notaway EMS. Because that could cause a lot of friction in your board. I realize.
What if it's an account?
They could have left pissed off.
Well, what if it's an account?
An accountant? He got EMS?
No, just an account.
We had one of them on the board.
Yeah. Notice he's saying, hey.
I think you need to all your board.
Catherine, Catherine, we can take some notes out. Okay.
And we got a lot.
So anybody that know Catherine, Catherine is elder law firm out of Portland, so she, she keeps us on the string there.
And and like I said, and that's a, a good thing as well, because we gotta make sure that we're doing the best thing we can do for the citizens of this county.
And that's, I think we understand the same.
And make sure they understand what we're doing, which I think, and and I don't have a problem, and I don't think anybody sitting at this table would have a problem with having citizen representation.
How about if we had a citizen representation, y'all voted to accept the citizen? How about that?
Yeah, I think it would be.
That would be more fair.
But before you do that, every board, do you have business practices, procedures, mission, all that written down of the expectation of a board?
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
Because that person selected needs.
We don't wanna start a paper service if we can have that as a beginning with.
Because you're paying two. We got.
So that's why I get some. How often do y'all meet a month and a month? Do y'all have a steak dinner before or after?
No.
Nothing eaten, no refreshment?
Not steak. I just got diagnosed with alpha gals, and they've got me chicken.
Fish is okay too.
Fish is okay too.
My, my family struggled with it.
And pork, pork the other way, meat, I can eat.
I'm the cook for it. Yeah, all cooks for us.
All right. So we've got some, I think we've come a long way just in a short time. I believe that the Notaway County Rescue Squad is the best way for the citizens to continue to have service for the best price. I know you hate that call. I talk about price.
No, no.
In business.
But that's, that's part of it now.
That's why we're here.
It's an important part of it.
So.
People need to understand.
Absolutely. No, I kinda agree with, uh, Mr. Ingram's dream that he had, asking sort of, what do y'all want?
I know what they want. We know what they want. They want y'all that.
When you're laying on it, when you're laying on the ground.
But then you get sort of, I mean, when you show up, what took you so long?
Is that, that's when you get your iPad and say, here, it's a hundred fifty dollars, wait.
And my answer, well, that is an application, though, that and you joining, which is better.
But, but you know, y'all have always been there for us in time of need, big time of need, and I'm very appreciative. But I get this tax levy imposed on me, and my insurance company pays y'all. If somebody ain't there on time, better hope I do die.
Wake them like a reindeer.
Call Joe McMillan on something to mention.
I'll put it to you this way, y'all. Oh, well, we're not even going intentionally, let you down.
I know, you, you never had, and nobody else. Not, as I said, it's equal. Y'all have been very equal.
And it.
But listen, this brings us up, this might not be the place to do it. I'm gonna touch on it just for a second. I think brings us up equal. There was a gentleman that was called the squad, called for him just past Saturday. I got an hour-long phone conversation pertaining to this today. The guy refused. He didn't really refuse services, but they, but he wanted the free ride. He had a odor coming from his leg. His leg was looked at, he had gangrene. They allowed that man to go away, the man not be on the ambulance. How could that be?
That would have to be something.
Would you look into that data?
You can't force, you can't force somebody on this one.
Yes, you can.
No, you can't.
I bet. Not a damn mind. He was, he didn't know what year it was.
The, 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 the department has to handle that.
Three days before that, he was seen walking in the middle of that road with a, a, uh.
I, I.
A, a, you heard about it?
I know the call you're talking about.
He had a gown on from the hospital with the little lead still on it.
And see that a lot.
You talking about the fellow in black?
But in the same right, when it's documented, and like, so we can't do anything, it was on the call due to HIPAA.
Right.
But those things are looked at, and like I said, on any human, if you know who you are, where you're at, what county you're in, and what's going on with you, and you say, I don't wanna get in that thing, I'm not getting in it, you can't do it because it's called kidnapping. Now, if we have a reasonable suspicion that that person is impaired to the point they're not making good sale medical decisions for themselves, then we have to refer to this gentleman behind you to do what's called a TDO, because we cannot, we can't even get medical TDOs.
So don't, don't, the sheriff, don't enforce the.
And then, if they have to go by ambulance and that TDO, that deputy has to ride with us in the ambulance to get that patient to the hospital for going totally against their will, to be completely legal with everything, because otherwise, then I gotta go find a lady like her because we're gonna get sued for kidnapping. But.
But if this man was not incompetent, and he had a gangrene odor coming from his leg, somebody should have forced him to get in some medical care.
Well, we can't force him. A family can, because.
But you said the sheriff, you said the sheriff's office can force him, right?
Yes, they can.
You asked my question.
Medical TDO.
Oh, I like to say something there. Just what you did is one of the biggest problems in this county. The public doesn't understand anything that's going on.
That's why I like to be.
Right there, then, you didn't know that.
And I asked.
And you asked. But the public, IQ public hasn't got a clue.
And and I can tell you a statement that I've had over the years, and I, and doing, since we did a little war story. We had a resident in this county that lived in a horrible situation that many members of our organization, the fire departments organization, had to go to over the course of almost twenty-four months. And we finally, the only way we could get anything done, we had to build an inspector condemn the home to finally get him out. And because even our social services department, when they went there, evaluated, said, yes, there's a problem here, but adults have rights. They have in their own mind, I'm fine, this is the way I wanna live, and we can't do a thing in the world about it legally. They, and even on social services, he said, you can't do anything.
It's funny.
We have, we have to go visit that, that particular family and put fire department air packs on to get them out of the home.
It's funny, it's, it's funny or odd that you mentioned social services. That is the thing that I, I put a keen ear to the complainant because she works in social services.
And any social services person I've ever talked to in the last thirty-plus years, and I've heard it in every locality, urban, rural, adults have rights, because I've called, we need to get this person some help. They refuse. Adults have rights to live.
And they should.
Get back on track.
Yeah.
You gotta get back on track.
So, board membership, we've agreed that there's gonna be one, one buddy, one board supervisor, a citizen, experienced citizen approved by the board.
Plus Buddy be part of the board.
That's three.
Right.
Is that where we are? Yeah.
Yeah.
I think we still need a mutually person, because this is affecting a lot of places.
When you define how you speak of mutually, the citizen.
Someone from, somebody outside the county.
From another agency that we use a lot.
Well, the citizen I got in mind is from another agency. I would say we.
So that could be a, you could two birds with one egg.
That'll, that'll have to be approved by the board.
That's exactly right.
That's correct.
Y'all have to vote whether to, to, to take that first one or not.
So that's.
And if you voted that, we're gonna send you another one. You had to vote on him.
And then you gotta find somebody.
Since two thousand and two, I've seen a lot of people come before an interview, so.
That's gonna be a board member.
Hey, Bo.
No.
Yes, sir.
Stay on track.
All right.
We're gonna look at your bylaws in regards to an agreement, the real property, the title. We also need to look at the bylaws in regards to our board being able to vote on various aspects as we go. You said something about the budget and things like that.
Maybe I think we should have the capability to ratify the budget.
Ratify their budget?
To show that we have looked at it and we.
Then we say, okay, um, so Catherine's gonna, we're gonna get Catherine to start working on that MOU about the things we've discussed. It'll come back to your attorney and to you guys, and this will start this process, okay? So we've agreed on that. We talked about the new, hopefully, new revenues that are coming in, different ways of doing business. I think, does, does anybody have anything else they'd like to say? We are, we have some other people here that may, or if they wanna say anything.
I got one question.
One question?
Now, you don't have to answer today. This goes back to the budget again. If, if Notaway County wrote you a check July first for what you, we are always gonna obligate to you anyway, can you make it until we collect from the tax levy?
I'm putting another ambulance on the road.
That would depend upon the amount of the checks, sir, and that's what we'd have.
Well, he said what we draw.
What, what I, what you have obligated, everything we've obligated you last year, I do the same thing, but this time, I don't wait till I collect. I give you the obligation July first. Up, up, up last year.
Well, that's gonna get, so if it's forty.
So it's two hundred.
You get into obligation, I'll give you the check without that.
July first, so in other words, and what we give you last year, one seventy, one twenty-two fourteen, then, then it, then it was another.
No, it was a total of two fourteen, two twenty-nine.
So the total was two twenty-nine?
Two hundred and fourteen thousand.
Two hundred and fourteen thousand dollars. Okay, so, so that was, but then, then, then another check come to?
That would have been the forty.
The forty for sticker. I think we, we rounded up to fifty, I thought.
Yeah.
Not for us.
It was forty, and it, I thought it was part of what we were still owed out of the decal money.
That, that's.
So it's forty, I'm sorry.
So that's, so what he's asking is, what would that normal allocation, what month would that get us to running two squads?
We can.
And you could just look, figure that out.
And like I said, because I tell you, average right now, with one truck and one QRV, our payroll is averaging almost twenty-eight thousand dollars a week. And our revenue recovery, I, we can give you exactly.
Last month, we got forty-seven thousand dollars.
Well, what I was hoping, I'm hoping, what I was hoping is, because you had mentioned, Mr. Lord, is that, I'm, I'm, I'm dipping, I'm not really dipping in general funds, I was gonna pay it anyway. But, but maybe with hard billing going, coming up, sort of, then, then when we get to, we collect the tax levy, then we know that some of the pennies will go there, some of it goes to the fire department. We, we, we gotta have more meetings on that, but I'm just trying to.
That has.
There's a lot of factors that come into play when you ask that question.
And I didn't want you to answer that, but I, you see, on my end, as a budget person.
But clarification, the number you just said, how much is one, one a week, what's your payroll a week?
About twenty-seven thousand.
Twenty-seven. And that's, that's for two, basically two employees, seven days a week, twenty-four hours a day.
Three.
Three employees.
That's basically three employees.
So you take twenty, if you take twenty-four hours times seven.
If you're gonna take that off there, maybe.
That's a hundred sixty thousand. Times three. It's five hundred four hours. You take twenty-eight thousand and divided by, divided by five hundred four hours. It's costing fifty-five dollars and fifty-five cents an hour.
Well, and the twenty-seven thousand dollar figure that he's giving you too also has.
Also includes our fast seat employee, so we can back out that amount.
Oh, yeah, because you can reverse that.
Because we can reverse that.
Oh, that makes more sense. I was gonna say, wait a minute.
That little bit will come back out in.
Yeah, it's two fourteen, two twenty-nine. I'm sorry, thank you.
I know y'all have a lot of numbers for.
What, what I'm just trying to do is, I'm not trying, we gotta pay it anyway. I just, the, the, the fire department's been gracious. They've all been gracious enough to say, hey, wait till you collect, you know, I get, they get that, but I'm hearing you, I'm hearing you closing up those. We don't wanna close up any dumb ones.
And we had any term numbers actually, like what it costs to insure one of these animals, carrying all the humans up the road, about twenty thousand dollars a quarter. But you see, you know, we have to put those numbers in, where they're in our.
Total, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. Does, uh, any other members of the squad have anything else they'd like to mention? Thank you.
Thank y'all for what you do.
Thank you. And any of the supervisors have anything else?
I wholeheartedly agree. The pub, the public meetings that y'all are looking at, having about all this, I very much agree that we need to have strong representation there. And answer these questions, and I more than welcome these questions if they see my trucks.
The rumors, the rumors are wise. So last Sunday night, I called Steve, I said, we gotta, we gotta get in front of people.
As, as normal.
So question, Lloyd.
I got a question. If this doesn't work, which I'm not saying it won't, but if it doesn't work, we have the authority by the code to seize their assets, correct?
If they fail to meet.
Meet, sir.
Let's not use the word if yet. Yeah.
But see, they didn't say it earlier, because he said that to the squad, he's not, they had to come to the county. That's what.
But if, if that were to happen, hopefully not, you owe money on all your buildings.
That's probably not a credit. You told me one time before. We got, yes, operating out of credit that.
On one building.
One of the buildings, property, so.
One of the two buildings.
And it's nowhere near what the buildings were.
Well, I, so Little Tweedy Bird told me the building needed about a hundred fifty, seventy-five thousand dollars worth done to it. Well, I, so Little Tweedy Bird told me the building needed about a hundred and fifty, seventy-five thousand dollars worth done to it.
I like to.
Little Tweedy Bird.
Little Tweedy Bird.
Ain't you ever heard of Little Tweedy Bird?
Must have been the one that run into a side of a mountain.
I did. Could have been.
If you.
When y'all get.
You don't have no big structures that need work.
No. But when y'all get these questions and comments about how bad we're doing, why don't you send them to one of our board members?
I don't want to bother you with it because I got the same thing on this boat.
We would love to be able to confront face to face.
And that's, and that's what we did tonight. Had a long discussion. Everybody was fair. Citizens got some good information. Mr. Higgin was gonna ask our final question.
Okay, I think we talked about this before, Steve. Rather than give a lump sum, give them so much per month.
Correct.
So we would meet that obligation by the end of the fiscal year.
And that's the only way, with bonus idea of board control, that's the only way we can do it.
And y'all, y'all would have, you would know how much revenue you're gonna get each month.
And what we want to do, it's the same thing. We wanted, and I told Buddy this and I told Steve this, we want to start giving y'all weekly reports on weekly payroll, revenue recovery, the money that we're coming in.
That helps with their peaks and valleys.
Exactly, that helps with their peaks and valleys. So you see, this month, they didn't give the twenty-eight hundred dollars out of that revenue recovery. Hey, next month, we might come out with seventy-five thousand, because that does happen. It's just because we don't get to dictate how Medicare sends us their money, we just know it's coming, we don't know exactly when. So, yes, and, and I think doing it in that kind of dispersal would maybe even benefit the county better and to make sure that it's fully transparent, you know exactly what my payroll's costing me this month. Well, hey, this is the month I was paying out twenty thousand dollars a quarter for my, my, um, vehicle insurance. Oh, we had to replace the engine in this one. Our bill to, our mechanic was twelve thousand dollars this month. Because there's, there's a lot more expenses, like any business actually, other than just the manpower and the payroll that's sitting in them right up down the road.
All right, I'm gonna go around the room here. Any comments or questions? Everybody be civil. If you're not civil, you won't stay. Mr. Higgin, any questions, comments?
Is there a number that you, what does the squad work in assets? What, I mean.
I heard.
And you don't need a number, is, is it, is it substantial?
Substantial. The, and, and I even heard a number from, um, the attorney at last month on the board meeting. They had already looked into it. I think our assets were showing from the two buildings at around eight hundred thousand dollars.
Buildings are assessed at about eight hundred.
About eight hundred thousand.
And if you're depreciating annulances.
That's right.
Very expensive.
Equipment from there.
Second question, that's my last question, is if the county gives you nine hundred thousand dollars, is that gonna put two squads on the road immediately and keep them on the road?
We'd have to get.
Have to look at the numbers. I mean, but that's the goal with what we proposed to them.
Have to get the workforce.
Was enough, that eight hundred ninety-six was hopefully enough to put, totally fund that one ambulance, because to do two, you're looking at more than the one point, um, seven million dollars.
Yeah, 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 wait a minute, you go collect a lot of that.
But we're collecting. That's where we're hoping our revenue recovery takes care of that, to make sure we're staffing that second ambulance. Because we're counting that money.
So, so he just asked you to get the nine hundred thousand, that's still just on this one.
But we're planning on putting the other one on the road with our other revenue that comes in.
We need to do that. Chief, well, any comments, questions?
No, keep doing what you guys are doing. It was a heart battle.
Appreciate your help.
Very much.
You've been helping us a lot.
Yeah.
Keep doing what can.
That's right. Bro.
I think, you know, talking with some folks too, a big question due to what we've seen is, uh, county gives you this money and y'all are short on staffing at Fast C for the day. We've noticed a lot of time, the personnel gets pulled off the nine-one-one, talk to the county and sent out there to cover that shift.
Well, that's a very good point on the MOU, Catherine.
It is, and that's something that's been recent, like in the last six months, as we've started running out of funds and actually having to cut back on the nine-one-one side. Is that what we want to happen? Absolutely not. If they pull from nine-one-one, the expectation is that they're backfilling that nine-one-one spot. We do have to comply with our contract. I know that y'all understand that. We don't want to cut the county short. Right now, I don't want to say.
Business and put it in a nonprofit.
Exactly. And we don't want to keep doing that, but we can't pay the nine-one-one personnel right now that we need to have on that second truck.
We understand that, but we're looking at it to money the county's giving you, that's too fun to pay truck.
Absolutely.
So how, it's no different, the way I see it, you're under a written contract with Fast C. You're going in as partnership with the county.
Your MO, an MOU is a contract.
Giving you almost a million dollars to staff this one truck.
Then you'll see it goes away.
But if they call short out there, we're gonna, we're gonna void this contract.
I'm not, I'm not cutting down your load at one truck. That was pulling from the second truck or my QRV driver.
Did y'all have to borrow a provider from another agency here?
For immediate call out.
Yes.
We had to call and get, and we paid for that provider to come down, because they've done the same with us in the past. When they had a situation, just like somebody called there from a job, you can't force anybody to come in, we couldn't find anybody that was available at the last minute.
So you're gonna.
And that was the day. We, we called Brian. And we paid for one of his providers for the day that was willing to work overtime on their shift.
You don't have somebody on call?
No.
Yeah. Like that was a.
I ain't gonna say they got anybody on call.
Thank you, though.
Chief Chanel.
I understand that. And the chicken hacker got people on call, they paid too.
Then, then you're.
It's, it's similar to
what David said earlier. Every one of my providers have at least one other job. Every single one of them. And I've currently got eight active operational providers. And I, I haven't had.
Get fifty-eight thousand dollars a year like they have to?
Say again?
Does yours average get fifty-eight, ninety dollars a year annually? Like they have to, because I can't hardly see somebody make fifty-eight, ninety dollars every time they do a second job.
But they also, they probably work elsewhere.
They're twenty-four hours in this squad and they go home, and they don't go home.
They go to another squad.
They go into another squad.
Yep.
So they making, they making good money.
Well, they making six figures.
When that person calls out, I'm like, that person, I was like, on the real, real thing, calling thirty-one people, did you come in? Did you come in? Nope, I'm not on the job. Nope, I'm moving back.
You better keep on going right through, you have some.
I'm trying, but somebody keeps getting on.
Well, you, I'll bring you back, I'll bring you back.
Chief Chanel.
Are you, QRV doesn't really bill, correct? Would it be more beneficial to add another person where you can actually be billing with those two that are running a QRV and not billing?
The QRV was kind of, what we did with the QRV was when I had attrition lately with employees who have left, because we didn't have the money to rehire and put that second truck on. So I didn't lay anybody off and people were still getting their hours. That's where it came up with one truck and a QRV. Plus, that gives me the option, when I do have that one call out of the three, that person moves off the QRV.
Was it, was it?
Quickly back.
And what I'm saying, the, the QRV is not generating any money. Whereas if you did the extra person with the squad, you can generate money.
Well, then I'm just doing two trucks, so that's where I can't afford to put trucks.
But right now, you're doing personally, the QRV that's generating.
Not every ship has a QRV.
And not every ship, you know, prime example, I had the day, the other day, I had thirteen calls. Over the weekend, I had two. And then you're paying all providers twenty-four hours a day to be there and they're prepared and getting paid for what they're prepared to do, not what they do. So you still gotta have that money coming in the door to cover that. So if they're there and don't get the call, I can't deal with it.
Looks like your busy days would cover that, though, where you had the thirteen calls.
Yeah, yeah, and it, and it will.
Where you're not giving that.
And that's the ultimate goal, is to have two trucks on the road. But we gotta have money coming in the door to pay those providers.
So you're not doing a QRV all the time?
No, if, sometimes I gotta drop the QRV to cover call outs or those staffing issues. So the QRV person goes into the.
A good question, chief, that was allocation of personnel.
Yep.
Look at that.
We actually need more personnel.
And we, you know, we're actively.
Bears. Any questions?
But piggyback off of what Joey's saying, what is the capabilities of your truck in the county at all, all the time, this compared to picket? Is it, uh, medic here, is it BLS here?
Some days it's BLS, some days advanced, and some days paramedics. I mean, it's, you, you might have a paramedic day or you might have an advanced day. And that's just based upon the local resources that you, if they don't come through the door without a clear patch to try to get a job, you can't hire a paramedic.
Initially, the.
That's resource.
Initially, the idea was to have a paramedic on every truck, or at least an A, and that worked for a while. But then you've got other agencies that are gonna say, okay, Mr. Paramedic, you're only making this here, we're gonna give you extra if you come over here. And sign-on bonuses too.
Right.
You know, there are a lot of agencies that are giving sign-on bonuses.
Five and ten thousand dollar sign-on bonuses.
But they got there to want.
Concern is, though, if you got a heart attack call.
Combinations of paramedics.
You've got a BLS crew, and you're gonna be counting on somebody to come from a county or counties over to come and help. I think that's a huge, huge concern that's gotta be addressed.
If we can turn out more paramedics, and I said this, and I've told me and Dion have had these conversations for years. When we did away with the old cardiac tech programs in the state, we lost hundreds of advanced life support providers in this state and have never recouped those numbers for that level, because you gotta remember. And the, the public doesn't know this, to become a paramedic, and we're seeing them now, those of us that came up through it, doing it as our hobbies and or what we did, we grew up and went up in the system. Now, we've got kids coming straight into the building that went to a paramedic program in college that took them two years to get their paramedic. And then it's gonna take you another eight months to a year to get them even where they're reasonably comfortable to run calls as a cleared paramedic.
Just to clear, just to clear things for the citizens, so ALS is advanced life support. That is a paramedic.
That is a, a paramedic or what we used to have in the county are intermediates as well or the state, but we quit.
To be the paramedic.
Turn those out anymore. Now.
Two EMTs. BLS is basic life support.
Basically.
That is just an EMT.
And you have, you have an EMTB.
So that's, I've, I've broken my leg and you gotta come get me.
A that's called an, an EMT advanced. That provider can do some limited advanced skills, some medications. And then you have your EMT paramedic that's able to do the entire scope of pre-hospital.
I would say to Chief Bears, that is, is scheduling is what you're asking about. So if you've got ALS provided.
That resources to be able to schedule with that.
But there's days that they don't.
Right. So that's a, so that's a place.
Four paramedics.
That's a place we need to, to acknowledge is there, that, that we don't always, we don't always have the ability.
So how many paramedics do you have in, in these thirty-one employees?
Currently, right now, full-time, I've got two full-time paramedics.
Yeah, you got how many?
Well, two that do nine-one-one, right?
And how many pod guys? Uh. Not including Bob, who's tied upstairs.
She can tell you exactly. And the problem is, is that I have to replace.
So your fast seat staff, is it four medics or is it four?
Four providers, two medics, two EMTs.
So medic being ALS.
Yes.
Do you have to have two out there at all times?
Yes.
You got two out there at all times?
Two ambulants.
Yeah, that goes to that contract, isn't it?
Two medics, two at all times. You have to have two medics.
Staffed by paramedic.
And they have to.
Yes.
All right. Thank you, chief. Chief, shoot, anything?
Yeah, without getting too deep into weeds, I listened to what you were saying. And to these folks who've been here, in twenty seventeen was most of the board's time here. In twenty seventeen, I brought multiple tax returns in from public record and showed that Nottaway Emergency Squad was losing substantial amounts of money every year. And this thing boils down to something, you said it a few minutes ago when you first started talking. Of course, I know, I was telling, Chief Toma here, that, uh, just to put an ambulance on the road with two people in it is a half million dollars a year. Nothing else, no fuel, no insurance, no nothing. So what it boils down to is Nottaway County historically, they're not really, you can't point fingers and blame anyone, but you said it was three million dollars per ambulance, uh, three million dollars for three ambulances. That's pretty close to correct. The national average is eight hundred and fifty thousand. So a million dollars, yes. A million dollars per ambulance, alright? Nottaway County puts three hundred thousand dollars in the EMS as ten cents on the dollar. What did you expect to get for your money?
They, they. They need to do it in service for free.
Wait a minute, oh, because I, I'm the guy that does those numbers. I've, I've successfully ran a business twenty-seven years doing it. So I do understand. When payroll gets up to between sixty and seventy percent, you go through any, uh, go through all the nonprofits, you go through all the agencies that fail. When their payroll exceeds sixty to seventy percent, they fail. They fail, pure and simple, aight? You know, the other ambulance service in this county gets three hundred thousand dollars a year revenue off of revenue recovery. They get a hundred thousand dollars from Nottaway County. Now, their payroll has not gotten up to the seventy percent level yet. But my last figures, if they're gonna staff twenty-four, seven, it's gonna be sixty-something percent, right at sixty-five. So they too, even though they may have a reserve, when I brought those tax returns in, those folks had gone through all their reserves, you can go online, pull their stuff down, and I can see what their balance sheet is. And they went through their reserves, it was gone, there was nothing left. So in their defense and in your defense, it was too little, too late. And, and now you're setting everything, this is happening all over the country, not just in.
But that also led to the idea of looking to Fast C as a way.
Yes.
That was up.
So that. I think in twenty eighteen, if I looked at your tax returns, that was when it started to develop, that's twenty eighteen.
So decisions made at the county level, then you guys had to make a decision.
Right.
And that was just the one that's something that.
And then we see the, we see that, you know, there's always unintentional consequences, so we see that. Okay, now you've got two ALS guys sitting out there waiting, waiting for something to happen. It may or may not happen. So, you know, we've seen salaries get pushed up, we saw, of course, just in the real estate market. We've seen all that because of Fast C. So there's things that always happen that you don't see. But it's, they happen and that's we, we live.
Yeah.
So, you know, for everybody, everybody thought that these folks, and they even thought Burt Fo was making money, can double this. No, I mean, you put ten cents on a dollar on something, you, you can't, you can't expect to be a big shareholder. If I had ten percent of the stock in Citizens Bank or ten percent of your farm, I don't think I'd be a very big shareholder. I don't think I'd be making a lot of.
If you had ten percent of Citizens Bank, you'd be a mighty big shareholder.
Well, but I, I just said, twenty, ten percent of any company is not gonna, not gonna do it. So really, for everybody sitting here, nobody's at fault.
I realized that the other night, chief. I was upset, standing at my kitchen counter, looking at these, the numbers that we've gotten from our former analysts. And I was upset, and I, I finally realized that this isn't my fault. All I can do, all I can do is fix it.
It's not, it's not the, you know, I've been around forty-some years. I, I don't know how long Joey's been.
Forty-some.
Forty-some. And, I mean, lots of people is sixty-some away, he's got, you know, he outlived Paul Bennett. But, uh.
Chief Toma, you and I have had some conversations. Was, you have any thoughts?
I had lots of thoughts. I will say in two thousand seventeen, eighteen, I proposed a levy to the board and.
Here we are.
So, here we are. Um, I know there's been accusations about the misrepresentation of a budget. That, that's the first I heard of it. Um, but I will want to emphasize that that gentleman worked for the board. Or he was a volunteer, he was on the board. That budget should have ran through the board and got approval from the captain before it got presented to the board of supervisors. So that was a huge miscommunication on that.
Or like you said, better information that projected revenue rather than actual. Those two words are very important.
Um, thirty one employees. Is that nine one one and Fast C?
Yes, that includes both. And like to real quick to answer the question.
Fifteen full time and sixteen.
Total of nine paramedics. The um, total, I've got five full time and four part time right now.
And I was transported by the squad recently and had a great time. My insurance should be paying the bill. Um, it was fourteen hundred A L S bill. I'm assuming that's the average for a A L S trip locally. Um, what's the turnaround time for a bill?
It depends.
On the carrier.
Yeah, it does. It depends a lot on the carrier.
You say carrier, the insurance.
Insurance, whether it's a third party.
Our biggest payer in Nottaway County and the quickest turnaround is Medicaid.
Medicare.
Um, Medicaid is absolutely horrible. Um, I'm getting payments as a matter of fact, that were filed on claims last March. I just, I'm just now getting some payments on those. Um, now granted, we are in a county that has quite an array of different carriers. We've got a couple of state facilities. We've got the federal facility. So you know, you're gonna fall into Anthem, COVID Care and stuff like that. Those are really good payers and they're usually within a forty five to ninety day timeframe, as long as they're not kicked back.
Who does the bill?
Captivate. They're out in Missouri or excuse me, Colorado.
So if we're gonna do hard billing, is.
The hard billing is going to start with Captivate. Um, right now, if you don't have any insurance, typically what they're gonna do is send your notices to say, you got a bill? Do you have insurance? Um, the next bill that goes out is going to be, right now with compassionate billing, they're just sending those three bills.
Right.
Um, at the second bill, they're gonna say, hey, they're gonna ramp it up a little bit, but we're still working on some verbiage. It says, you owe the money because you had this bill on this day. Um, third bill goes out, then it'll come back to me. I think this is how we're gonna do it. I've gotta look at specifics because we're going back and forth with some formatting issues right now. Um, once the third bill hits, it'll come back to me as a bad debt. And at that particular point, I'm still back and forth on whether or not another notice will go out for collection. Um, if that does happen, then there's a, probably a thirty day timeframe and then legal action will ensue.
Okay.
And she's also working, one thing, it, it costs money to file these claims. She's working on it. She can tell you.
I'm working with the, um, our attorney. He's gotta get back to me. Um, there are certain things in district court because they'll be under twenty five thousand dollars. So there'll be district court, civil case, civil cases. Um, you can get a waiver for paying the court fee, which right now, when I left the court, it was fifty six. I think it's sixty one now to file it. Um, if I can get a waiver file to waive that because we're a nonprofit agency, that's gonna help with the cost on our end and also with the customers' end. Because that's sixty one dollars less that I have to charge. Um, but there, yeah, there's a lot of things still working right now, mainly verbiage and how many exactly? If they're gonna send out the three and I go ahead and step in at that particular point, but they're gonna be the two and I send the last, the last bill for it.
For the collection. Now, I do wanna emphasize, there's a House bill that goes into action July first. That says medical bills cannot go to collections.
They don't show, I think they go.
They, they could go to collections.
They just don't show up on your credit report.
Credit report.
Yes.
Also, you cannot take them to court. You can't wage their garnishes for medical bills. If they're.
So what's hard billing going to accomplish?
Is, is that a Commonwealth of Virginia law? Is that a federal law?
Commonwealth. So.
And that's probably part of what I need to talk about.
So if we're gonna hard, if we're expecting hard billing to solve this problem.
No, it, it, it was never meant to solve the problem.
Right.
Because it's not going to.
I would say that third one is when you then say, let's set up your payment plans for twenty dollars.
Yeah, and that's, that's hopefully what that third bill is going to just start. Hey, you know, we don't wanna take it further. Call the offices and make payment.
And people want to be able to plead their applications.
And we've got some, some of them do this, some of them do.
Come on.
Character, Dion.
And then I guess on top of that, the, the membership. It's a nice way to get a little bit of money upfront, but ultimately you're losing money for that difference that they're gonna be, insurance is gonna pay and what's avoided in insurance.
Potentially.
Potentially.
But you also, you know, I'm, I'm having a, a coronary event. You come and get me. I don't have my wallet. I don't have my insurance information. You don't know who to bill.
So they're gonna give anyways from the hospital.
Somehow.
You know, you would hope. Y'all sell the debt to a debt collector for like thirty percent and debt collector pay you and assume the debt they collect.
You would do that to your citizens.
So that, do that collect and they, and they pay the EMS thirty percent?
Yeah.
Cause they collect more by getting that thirty percent or something.
Well, that's usually a contingency fee basis.
It really just said, you can't take.
Yeah, they don't want you to.
Anything else to the L T.
Because you have to be a member of the organization. So use, consider that. Also, the constitution.
The, the constitution.
Constitution.
You can be reached so that who can be a board supervisor.
Coming on.
Yeah, right.
So we, but that definition is board supervisors. It's not me. It's not.
Right, yeah. We just have to change what our board, our constitution, what our board consists of, yeah.
And really, your constitution doesn't say anything about what the executive committee consists of.
Right. It just says appointed by the captain.
By the captain. So I've really.
So we're gonna describe.
That gets refilled.
Describe the members of.
Who constitutes the board. I would also preposition that the board is extremely heavy. So it's heavy EMS wise by Nottaway County Emergency Squad. So if there is a vote. It's gonna lean one way.
It's gonna lean one way to Mr. Toast's point. We've got the power to check.
Necessarily. No. And I understand exactly what Chief Tomer's saying too. And it, it's something that we can discuss and look at because I don't think any board is. A board is there to do the good of the organization, just like.
If you did, if you did two counties, two EMS, two fire and a citizen, then that's not a weighted board in any way.
Yeah.
Into Chief Tomer.
Correct. But if you just add two board members and one more, I, how many is on the board now?
Seven, right now. Seven including he do. So and he's, he officiates in, in non-voting. So we're looking at adding three.
Yeah. So three to six, three to six.
It would be a nine vote voting that, that helps keep it everything you, even odd note ties typically. Um, doing it that way and like I say, I don't have a problem with the makeup. That would be up to what the captain decides and so forth. And it, reducing it by and adding it and making it even, like I said, as long as the board's there for the good of the organization and the good of the citizens.
Well, I don't wanna sound black. I don't wanna sound blackmailing, but it, it's, it's just like this. It's, I don't wanna sound blackmailing. We gotta help this y'all out. We gotta help y'all out. Y'all need to help. It's our obligation. We're making our obligation to help y'all. But if we don't like what you do, we cut the money out.
Yeah.
So that takes care.
Yeah.
But if y'all don't wanna do it no more, y'all can cut it off yourselves. So you know what the heck with this. I ain't, let them do what they wanna do because I don't want to put it no more. Cause you're not protected. No cash in the bank.
Cause it is the best thing for the citizens and the county. That's why we're all still sitting.
That's why, that's what we're here for.
And we do have another ambulance on order.
That is on order and it's also figured into the replacement through the stuff that you guys have gotten over the course of.
I thought we was just trying to get two back.
We're, we're trying to sell a couple of assets.
It's replacement.
No, I'm talking about the two lease ones we talked about a little earlier.
Three where we are.
Yeah, but you're using, you're not using one of them.
We're not using one of them out of Fast C.
So why do we need another ambulance? Why do y'all need another ambulance? Just transparent.
The replacement.
Eight, worn out. Well, then use the one that you leased and then you ain't got to turn it in.
Could extend it that far, yes.
That's a no brainer.
Not really.
To help you out that whole fourteen thousand dollar month. You gotta pay that anyway. Use the ambulance. Don't get another one. That's just my suggestion. I'm not sure, you know.
And you have to.
If he goes on your board, he might suggest.
I probably won't be the one on the board because y'all be the top. I don't want to do that.
I just, I keep complaining you've ordered another one and you're in debt. The poor sheriff needs stuff, but he always sends on make.
It's real, it's real simple, Daphne. These vehicles travel the highways sometimes twenty four hours a day.
I get that.
The oldest one is, I think, two thousand and ten.
No, I thought it was fifteen.
Maybe fifteen. I mean, we just don't come back and park them and they don't go.
I was going all the time.
Hours meet guidelines to be replaced about every five years. Average fire truck about twenty. They get, after that twenty years, the average fire truck got about twenty thousand miles on it. If that, hours get a hundred thousand miles a year.
Also, Daphne, you don't just.
Costs cars or an ambulance.
They have to be identified.
Close to three years to get.
Two years, three years.
You can't wait.
Trying to get rid of a leased vehicle and you're buying a vehicle. I get, I think that's the question.
That is the question.
The. Leases when they were done, were done and the current board sitting here now feels it wasn't a good thing to have done. We, I wish that lease hadn't have been in.
Paid too much for them? Is that what you're saying?
Not so much.
I would think we should have gone that route.
We should have went that route.
On this new one that we were speaking about, are y'all considering purchasing that with some money that you don't know you have? Are you gonna lease that? Are you gonna finance that? Are you gonna fire?
That was being done based upon the replacement cost that's packed into the stuff that Buddy proposes to y'all.
Yeah, but I'm talking about now that what Buddy didn't propose to us was until y'all approached us at the budget meeting, it was eight hundred and ninety six thousand. How do you plan to pay for the ambulance on order? Are you gonna lease it? Are you gonna purchase it outright with cash? Or are you gonna finance? Or are you gonna use part of this eight hundred and ninety six thousand dollars?
To go by past practices, we have a choice to do it in either one of the two. Either financing or pay cash.
So y'all can pay cash. Y'all got the money.
No.
Oh, then that ain't no joke.
That's the two choices.
But we get it, we might have the money. It's not due for another year.
I would consider trying to put a hawk on that and use one of them lease when you try to get rid of it. But anyway, I gotta go back to that one you gave and it's.
What?
This chair.
I, I strongly agree and, and, and helping the squad out, I would recommend it go strictly to nine one one salaries. On a monthly basis, get us two trucks on the road.
You recommend that the county money goes to the nine one one salaries.
Salaries.
Under the M O U agreement.
Fast C will supplement operational expenses. Let's.
Like, we're doing that.
Right. Let's, if we're gonna put money in it, let's.
And this is, this is a service for the citizens. So their money should.
This money don't need to go to serve a, a EMS worker going out to Boff.
That's true.
That's what I'm saying.
It wouldn't. Barfoot takes care of itself.
That's part of that, that's part of the, that's part of the M O U. That's, that's, as Ron said, this is a contract. With the squad, between the county and the squad, we, we give them money.
All the money.
And they agreed to provide, to provide us our straight. I mean, that's a simple thing. We just have to get there. And we've gotten a long way tonight.
Can we allocate that money to, this might be what you don't like. Allocate that money to go specifically for labor. And what y'all do collect, did it go for maintenance, upkeep, lease agreements and all that? Because the labor will take care of it. Eight hundred and ninety six thousand won't even take care of labor, but it, cause your labor is one five plus three.
It just depends on how deep in the weeds you wanna get. You can say.
I think, I think we'll keep it specific to labor. Cause he said the reason.
Can you say that?
But we're trying to fix that.
But can you say that, that the county money goes to stand up one squad, twenty four set, three, six, five, twenty four set? Do you need to say labor? Do you need to say analysts? Do you need to say?
I think, I think you need to set the expectation. You're, you're being in the conflict with the squad. The expectation is.
We're, just like they're, just like they're D R T.
Correct.
It's just a better deal for our citizens because they're not, they're not the property.
I wanna, a paramedic on a Q R V. There, there needs to be collaboration between the two agencies to where the citizens are served. And one ambulance is not.
No.
It hasn't cut it for years. When twenty three, you guys had issues. And that was our biggest thing in, in front of the fire service board was you need to get a second ambulance on the road.
We'll get one last.
Who was that?
That was when Brandon asked for money.
Yeah, buddy, that's one of them.
Okay, so, okay, so for less than three weeks, we were one ambulance.
They won ambulance man.
Right.
Right. I wasn't talking about him.
But it was, it was an issue when it was brought up and the goal was.
And it is.
The goal is and that's it.
Yeah, and the way it was put to us, it was gonna be an extended time period of being an issue if that money wasn't allocated.
Yeah, correct.
All right, we'll.
Should have been more.
We asked for a motion to adjourn. Everybody can, everybody can hang your head off.
Wait, yes, I, I guess one more question.
Okay.
Well, what Dion said, but that's what I'll make sure. This Thursday night, I'm gonna ask y'all to give me permission to advertise for the tax letter. I'm gonna ask you that. When I, when I advertise to, to, to adopt the ordinance for the tax.
Fire and EMS.
Get the tax, the cash, fire and EMS. I don't have to put a number on that first of all. I, I can do that with the budget.
Okay.
That's what I need.
So now we're looking for a second on the end?
I'm sorry.
I've got a motion on the floor. We'd like everybody to come to that public hearing.
And it's not. Well, I mean, a public hearing doesn't.
There's no second. The motion is failed. All right. Thank you, thank you, everybody. Hard conversations.